Good evening, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 14th, 2024 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence, think about whatever it is you want to think about. Thank you. If you'd please stand and join Alderwoman Newton in the leading up the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for the seat. Ardone?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinards?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobchin? And Burkholder?
Here.
Name, present, your honor. Thank you, sir. So, good evening and welcome, everyone. Again, like to begin the meeting of the City Council, like to welcome everybody in attendance, anybody who's viewing through any particular electronic device. Respectfully, we welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. If you just please put your cellphone on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please talk to the council and staff as a body and not as any individual. Please don't use names, clap or cheer or yell. We'll be respectful of you, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you. Remember, no disruptions, because we want to hear everybody that's talking. Thank you very much. Will an alderman please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for January 24th, 2024?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Any city administrator update, Ms. Merritt?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Very good. Will an alderman please move approval of the Committee of the Whole report for February 7th, 2024? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have one appointment and one proclamation. The appointment is to the Reverend of Front Improvement Commission, Dan Darlins, a new appointment from the Fifth Ward. Accept a motion to approve.
So, second?
Motion and second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you, sir, for serving. We have one proclamation, Black History Month, and I'll read. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of the achievements and significant contributions by Black Americans, as well as a time to honor the legacies of those who have helped to shape our nation. And in whereas 1915, Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson, a Harvard-educated Black scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson initiated Black History Week in February 1926, and in 1976, during the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded to Black History Month, with President Gerald Ford issuing the first presidential proclamation declaring the month of February as Black History Month in the United States. And whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to unite and celebrate the many achievements and accomplishments by Black Americans, not only in our community but across the nation. And whereas the City of Davenport is proud to celebrate Black History Month, recognizing, honoring, and valuing the contributions and achievements of the Black American community, and is dedicated to providing a welcoming, diverse community for all. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim February 24th, 2024, as Black History Month. In the City of Davenport, encourage all citizens to celebrate the contributions of our Black American community and honor the lasting and continued contributions they bring to the success of our city. Accept a motion to approve the proclamation. Motion is second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And Mr. Guster? Anyone here to see? Okay, we'll make sure that they receive the proclamation. Thank you. Next, we have one presentation, Mayor's Community Partnership Award for Northwest Bank, and I'll read that. For approximately the last 15 years, Northwest Bank Tower, located at 100 East Kimberly Road, has been available for fire department training. This facility provides the department with the location to accomplish simulated high-rise operations in a real-world environment. Davenport Fire Department consistently uses the facility for our recruit academies. In fact, we have had well over 18 academies and more than 70 firefighter recruits participate in this essential recruit training. The training scenarios are based around standpipe operations with large structures, as well as rescues for high-rise structures. Additionally, on many occasions, the facility has been used for department-wide training. This also includes standpipe operations, but just on a larger scale than a recruit academy. The department has used the building for training on elevator emergency use, technical rescue disciplines, and a wide variety of other operations. We appreciate the willingness to help us with our training needs and hope to continue this relationship into the foreseeable future. And I'll meet Mr. Slavens and Mr. Blomaker at the podium to receive the award.
Thank you very much.
Yep, chief?
Yeah.
Let's all get in. Here you go. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay?
One, two, three.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Say the words, sir.
Chief, thank you.
Yeah, please.
Oh, chief, thank you, council. I didn't know I was supposed to say anything, but hopefully continue to do this, and we look forward to it every quarter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Northwest Bank. Okay, next is petitions and communications from anyone. Seeing none? Okay, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. Just wanted to note that Monday is President's Day. I believe that we, the city is closed, and a Third Ward meeting would normally be on the third Monday, but again, we're snake-mitten by this schedule, but that's okay for the first two months of the year. So, we will be meeting on Monday, February 26th at 6:30 here at City Hall. It's the Third Ward meeting. Our new alderman-at-large, Jasmine Newton, will be our guest, and we'll be probably also having some updates on the budgeting that we've been working on. So, again, Third Ward, February 26th, Monday, here at 6:30, City Hall. Jasmine joining us, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, sir. I also wanted to remind everybody that February 29th, I'll be having my Fifth Ward meeting every Thursday at the end of the month is what I'm going to do consecutively, and then in between, there will be an event called the Night Out with an Alderman, where I'll be spotlighting businesses throughout my ward. So, it will always be a ward meeting, but I'm going to mix it up. And they found Nemo, now they're finding Junior. So, this weekend at Junior Theater, all weekend long, there'll be productions of Finding Nemo Jr. All productions are free. There will be Saturday afternoon, Saturday 1:00 and 4:00 p.m., Sunday at 3:00 p.m. So, if you haven't found Nemo Jr., find your way over to Junior Theater so we can find Nemo Jr. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move on. So, to the discussion agenda, the first item is a motion directing the city administrator and related staff to implement an internal animal services unit and negotiate any related contracts or agreements. Before I go to public, I'm going to go to Alderwoman Newton. A few council folks have been intimately involved with staff in discussing with the Humane Society how to move forward, and Alderwoman Newton will provide an update. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, mayor, for this point of privilege. I'd like to provide an update at this time. As the public may recall, this item came on the agenda on January 3rd of this year. At that time, the council felt the need to take a proverbial step back so that we could go back to the table and attempt to negotiate in good faith. So, the council did unanimously vote to table it for two cycles. The item came back on the agenda last week, as that's when it would appear after the two cycles. We asked to put it on for discussion to allow us time since we were still under negotiation. At this moment, I am pleased to announce that we have reached a tentative agreement with the Humane Society of Scott County. After we hear from the public and from council, I will be motioning to table it for one more cycle to allow time to draft a contract and execute it, and the hope is that in March, we would see a new agenda item for the council's review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton, and thank you to the council members that helped with this. Okay, is there any public with comment?
Gary Eklund, live in Davenport, Iowa. I just want to, I was surprised to hear that. That's good news. I hope that goes through. I just want to emphasize that the city should be reducing its staff by a minimum of 20% within the next year and does not need to be adding additional new staff. I'm sure that the Humane Society employees are paid nowhere near as well as Davenport City employees, and I'm sure their pension benefits are nowhere near as high. I wish them all well, but we need far, far, far fewer city employees and far, far, far su-
Point of order, your honor.
Mr. Eklund, you know the deal. Stay on the item, please. Last time I'm Ashke. You know, you try every time to kind of stretch it. I allow you to do that a little bit, but be careful. Thank you.
We have enough city employees. We don't need to be adding more, and I think that's on point. I think that is on point. You can point of order, silence the man, don't let him speak.
Okay, anything else on this issue?
I hope this goes through. We don't need any more city employees, our city vehicles.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Judith Lee, Second Ward, and I want to say thank you to everyone that worked with the Humane Society on this, and those who supported those who worked with the Humane Society. And I hope to hear what the contractual agreements are going to be as a member of the public so before you vote. So, I look forward to hearing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Will an alderman please, up, move the motion? Okay, motion is second. Any discussion from alderfolks?
Clarification, it's motion to table.
Well, yeah, no, this motion to do it, then you can, we'll make the motion to, during your time, motion to table. Does anybody want to discuss before? Alderman Kelly, do you want to discuss before she makes her motion to table? Please.
Thank you, sir. Please sit down. So, we all will be briefed on what the tentative agreement has been rolled forward before, so will we somehow brought up to speed is what I'm-
Respond.
Yep, before we, it'll come back to you in next cycle, and you'll certainly see that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Roger. Okay, Alderwoman Newton?
Absolutely, and I do believe that we received-
Go ahead.
I do believe that-
I see her.
I believe that we received an email with information regarding the tentative agreement, but certainly when it comes back on the cycle, I would ask staff, obviously not just the contract, that the council is going to be approving, but even the historical context of how we got to the contract. Thank you.
And I see, Ms. Merritt, do you want to add any context?
I do, thank you. Attorney Hyer and I were just discussing that to get this to line up with the correct cycle, we actually need to amend the recommendation to you and ask you to table this for two cycles, given that tonight is a council meeting. The two cycles would allow it to come back first cycle in March, which is what we actually need. So, just wanted to put that out there, and then yes, we will be providing all of the information in the green sheet with the contract approval resolution when that comes back first cycle.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. Okay, before I go to, back to Ms. Newton, anybody else? Very good. Alderwoman Newton?
Thank you, your honor. I would motion to table this item for two cycles.
Okay, there's a motion in a cycle, a motion in a second to table for two cycles. Brian, please call the roll. McGinnis?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
Name, yes, as your honor? Very good, thank you. The motion is tabled for two cycles. Next item is approval of all items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent. Kelly?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
And Burkholder?
Yes.
Name, yes, as your honor? Very good. Consent approved. The next area is, are there any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions? There are none. Next area, is there any public with business? If there are, please, if anybody, whoever's up first, the next one, pick a podium, stand by it so I know you're coming. Remember our rules. Thank you. Please.
Thank you very much. Judith Lee, Second Ward. I wanted to talk a little bit about freedom of speech. The First Amendment states regarding freedom of speech, "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of a people to peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." It's a very important issue. The rights of the First Amendment have been applied to all levels of government by the Supreme Court, including here. It was reported to me that they muted and cut out public comment last meeting. For those who are watching, council, mayor, and staff need to remember who they all work for and why you all have a job in the first place, the public, us, your constituents. I've watched council and mayor from both sides of the dais and watched council members openly show contempt to speakers who are their employers, including obviously being on their phone or iPad, and clearly not caring about what is being said while people are speaking by their body language. I've observed treatment of the public by council and mayor getting progressively more rude and ugly, and I believe out of hand unnecessarily, including shouting, point of order, sometimes repeatedly in one meeting. This is also why I believe that any code of conduct must include how council, mayor, and the staff treat the public, including regarding their right to petition the government for a redress of grievance and to publicly speak to and about government officials in public meetings. A meeting runs from gavel to gavel. An entire meeting, as documented in the agenda, must be recorded and archived. The constant and unnecessary restrictions are to become, have made the point of making us look and actually be ridiculous. Have we indeed become a third-world country, as Representative Gary Moore reported on television and related to this city's lack of transparency? I was also asked, why are they doing this? I didn't have an answer. These are excellent questions. Why are there some of the, what are some of the characteristics of a third-world country? An autocratic and dictatorial government, tampering of elections to stay in power, and the suppression of free speech. I know for a fact that Representative Moore is watching Davenport and our actions very closely as his legislation moves forward in the House. I believe there is the bare bones legal aspect, and then there is the right thing to do as it relates to your oaths to support the Constitution as public officials and as a veteran. In the special session, a concern over potential liability for defamation was repeatedly raised by council members and by Acting Corporation Council. An analysis of Supreme Court cases over the last 80 years conducted by the Cornell Law Institute, and I could have gotten it from anywhere. Freedom of expression, they say, upon public questions is secured by the First Amendment and has long been settled by the Supreme Court with a profound, quote, "national commitment" to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp scrutiny, sharp attacks on government officials and elected officials. Public officials are subject to public scrutiny and, quote, "criticism of their official conduct does not lose its constitutional protection merely because it is effective criticism and hence diminishes their official reputation." Criticism of the government, they continue, is at the very center of the constitutional protected area of freedom of speech and free discussion. Criticism of those responsible for government operations must be free lest criticism itself be penalized. The First Amendment interest is that true speech on matters of public concern not be inhibited. Once again, the city is hiding behind, I believe, an inappropriate claim of city liability that is inconsistent with the constitutional First Amendment. As long as public comments are addressed to city and elected officials and not private citizens, defamation is an extremely high bar. An already traumatized public is revictimised over and over, and repeating this decision to suppress and restrict public comment further contributes to the appearance of lack of transparency, accountability, and caring, and creates further distrust of Davenport City Government. Council, mayor, and city officials must do your civic duty to provide our meetings in their entirety for the widest number of people possible, including those watching, so we can, you can better represent our residents and make informed decisions. If the city implements this mistaken policy, then shame on the city of government, the city of Davenport. Livestream and record all meetings, gavel to gavel, do the right thing, and then listen to what is being said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gary Eklund, live in this town. I'd like to pretend that you all wish my well with-
Mr. Eklund, I know, we know, but do you have a ward or address?
Oh, yeah, I live in Alderman Kelly's.
Thank you.
I want to pretend that you all wish me well in my endeavors. I created an art site, and today I got my first visitor from Beijing, China, and February 5th, I got my first visitor from South Africa, Cape Town, and they clicked on an image which relates to some of the crimes that I allege the City of Davenport engaged in and discriminatory conduct, and I thought, how amazing that years after the fall of apartheid, there's somebody in Cape Town, South Africa, reading about discrimination in Davenport, Iowa, and looking at artwork documenting that. And I didn't have money to make photographs today, but I'm going to be showing photographs for the next few weeks. This is what remains, there's one or two other pieces that remain, but I, when a friend of mine named David Whitaker died a couple of years ago, I inherited a manger scene, a nativity scene. It was on a picnic table until the Davenport Police Department destroyed it as part of what I alleged to be a white supremacist hate crime. They told me it was illegal for me to have a nativity scene on my table.
Mr. Eklund, stay to your point.
The Native American artwork that was destroyed in December of 2022, I don't have a picture of that, but this is a lamp that I bought at the exact same time, at the exact same estate sale. The Native American religious art that they destroyed was larger, and this one always feels like it's telling me to stand up straighter and to be better, and that's a good thing to hear, you know, but it's a little strict. And the other one was the most beautiful and uplifting piece of art that I've ever seen, and it always said, be inspired, see the beauty. And Davenport City staff saw the beauty of my Native American religious art, and they destroyed it. And I'm calling upon you, Mr. Mayor, to take responsibility for that and resign. I was born and raised Catholic. I noticed, I noticed the ashes. I was born and raised Catholic. I don't consider myself Catholic anymore, but I know I have a legal right to nativity scene, whether the legal department agrees or not. So, I'm going to move on real fast here. Sam Cook comes to me and he says, he says, you remember that song I wrote back in, I put out back in January 1964? He said, I think maybe that was the best song I ever wrote. And I said, you know, Mr. Cook, I think you may be right. And he says to me, he said, did they really declare it illegal for you to grow blueberries in your yard and send the police to destroy your blueberries in all of your gardens? And I said, yes, Mr. Cook, that is true. Well, I was hatched by a river in a little river town. Could have been this river, just might have been this town. There was a time I didn't think I'd last too long. I really don't feel like doing this today, but since I know you're eliminating the time limits and you're kind of eliminating public comment because you don't want to hear from uppity black women without college degrees, first time in my life I've seen uppity black women without college degrees speak to the city council, and you want to tell them to sit down and be quiet.
Mr. Eklund, last morning, please address your point.
I'm not the one eliminating public comment.
Please address your point.
My point is-
If eliminating public comment is your comment, then please address that.
My, my point is, these uppity black women, and I use, that's usually used as a derogatory term, uppity black women, but I use that as a high praise. No college degrees, and yet they think they have the right to speak to the city council, and the city council's response is, we'll, we'll just eliminate that. When I go downtown, I go to the Davenport, Iowa City Hall. I go down to the movie theater. Sign says, Negroes and Mexicans upstairs. No dogs or Indians allowed. Thanks, legal, your commitment to equal treatment under the law is nonexistent. It's been a long, long time coming, but I know change is going to come, and I apologize, Mr. Sam Cook. My mental state is not in the mood to play with your song, it's in the mood to speak, and yet here I am in the last public comment section that our city's government allows, where they use the term N-I-G-G-R-S, N-I-G-G-E-R-S, behind closed doors in City Hall, and the city staff calls black tenants lowlifes, and they get away with it.
Okay, thank you, you're done. Please sit down.
It's been a long-
Thank you, sir.
Long time coming.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Jessica Knoll, Second Ward, and I can never, I honestly can't believe myself that I'm actually going to stick up for you guys tonight. This is the first time ever in my life I ever thought this. I'm sorry that just because you don't, you don't, you think you know us, you don't, for one. For two, you don't know what kind of education we have. For three, this is not an advertising company, and we don't repeat ourselves continuously every week, and we stay on topic. Now that I got that out of my way. Last week, when I was up here, I had said something about something being done with justice or something with 324 Main, with the landlord. What I meant by that is not necessarily, I understand you guys can't do criminal charges, that is up to investigation, that's up to the DA. My point of view of that is, is this man is continuously making tenants' lives hell with other tenants and his other properties. My thing is, is why is he still being able to rent, period? He should have, he should have, his rental license, I mean, I was going to say his rental license should have been taken away, but he never had it anyway. But something needs to be done, particularly something at your guys' level as far as that. I know there's other council people that had ward meetings in the last week that actually showed knowledge to their ward members and realized that it's not just us that are down here every week, that are upset with how things have been handled, the lack of transparency and accountability. I want, I wish I could get that alderman recognition for that, but I do want to tell you it's appreciated, and thank you for listening. I think you know who you are. Two, when I came in tonight, I greeted my friend with love, you babe. I can greet my friend however I seem pleased, as long as they do not take offense to what I'm saying or how I'm saying it. I do not appreciate your staff coming back with a slick comment to what I'm saying when I was not directing anything to her. At the end of the day, I try to only keep my comments aside from my own alderman and one that I work with still, that's on council, to you guys during this time. I do not try to conversate with you guys outside of it, because outside of this meeting is your time, and I respect that. But I do not feel that it was right for her to get pissy because I directed my friend the way I wanted to. And I don't know if anything will actually be done with that or not, I mean, but again, I just want to repeat, we are tired of hearing the same things over and over every week. We are tired of topics being changed and not stayed on point, and do not judge a book by its cover because you do not know what education they have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Makona Dixon, Seventh Ward. I just want to point out just one quick thing, that people come down here and they tell you guys a problem. In the last eight months, I've had, I've sat in these seats, and I've heard citizens come down here and talk about them doing construction to their home, about stuff they have going on outside, about things they have just going on in many different ways, and, or complaints about, you know, stuff being thrown out or their yard or whatever. If you guys acknowledge the situation and handle it appropriately, then they will have no reason to come down here and complain again. That's common sense. That's common sense. Acknowledge the problem, fix it if you can, and get them out of the way. That's easy to do. Point them in the right direction, steer them in the right direction, give them the phone number, do whatever you got to do to point them in the right direction, and then they'll be on their way. Now, I'm not sure about 324 Main Street, if you can do that for us, because I've been here for eight months, and I, we've had other regular citizens point us in the right direction on who to complain to. So, I don't know, maybe you guys need to do some more training and figure out how you handle your citizens. Thank you for acknowledging Black History Month on the second week, and I just want to read this real quick. Dr. King said, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Sheriff Shagnus, third ward. I'm going to talk about the 324 Main Street building. You guys can't talk about it, I understand you have legal lawsuits, that does not allow you to, but I'm very curious about the setup within the Public Works Department and the Iowa Code Enforcement, and how that is handled in this city and this department. And according to Iowa Code, the organization and enforcement, the city can delegate someone as the building official, and that building official will have the same rights and authority as a law enforcement officer, especially when public safety is involved. And not only do they have the rights and responsibilities of a law enforcement also, they also assume the liability. And that reads... They assume the powers and duties of law enforcement officer as provided for, in the Code of Iowa, Section 15.08.205, subsection H, regarding liability. And I'm scrolling down, liability, the building official or his or her authorized representative charged with the enforcement of the administrative code, code, and the technical codes, acting in good faith and without malice in the discharge of his duties, shall thereby not render himself person, shall not thereby render himself personally liable for any damage that may accrue to the persons or the property as a result of the act, or in the omission or the discharge of his duties in the suits brought against the official or the employee, or by omission performed by him or the enforcement of such provision of the code, shall be and defended by legal counsel provided by this jurisdiction until final termination of such proceedings, including the provision of surety for any and all damage claimed insured in such proceedings. The building official or his authorized representative charged with the enforcement of the administrative code, acting in good faith, I think that's key right there, and I think that's a very subjective terminology. Therefore, I am not positive that someone can be exempt from liability if they did not act in good faith. Public works should have an automated system for this, in which case, when you're applying for a permit, it's online. When there are violations, it's online. We were told a clerk was fired because she misfiled one piece of paper. There should be at least four pieces of paper, one of them pink, one yellow, one white, and then another one, extra copies that go to everybody, but you also should have an automated system that rings bells, sounds alarms, when you have a building that should have been vacated three, four days, or at least one unit of it, three or four days before it fell down. May 28th, it fell down. June 30th, it was supposed to be vacated. The tenant was supposed to be informed, per code, state code, of the vacate order. Einstein's definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing and expect different results. I may be uppity, but I'm not insane. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Any other reports, Ms. Merritt? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Have a good weekend.